All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. It's now 6:00 P.M. We'll stand and see the pledge.
My wife, my children, this is Claire, of the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, for whose hands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
BJ, would you be the speaker?
Yes. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, and we thank you to this community and Congress for asking you to be with us today in decision-making, and probably thank you for the rain we've created from the water. Yes, it's a magnificent time.
Thank you. I want the record to show that all the directors are present except for one. Blake Ward is unfortunately won't be able to be here today because he's... I guess the road is too red.
Flooded.
We'll move to public comments. I have one from Ms. Hibbert.
It's me. My name is Marla Hibbert. I live here in Rattler Hills. I'm speaking for some taxpayers in North Hope in King County. I'm addressing Agenda Item Number 10. The citizens of King County have been very clear that our number-one priority is that you, the KCGCD, fulfill your mission statement, and I quote it here, "to develop, promote, and implement water conservation and management strategies." We are looking to see immediate and urgent action and expenditures that fulfill that mission. Our expectation is that we see expenditures that reference legal and/or expert counsel in creating a critical management plan. Without knowledge of proposed or pending litigation that might or might not prove to be a threat to your mission, there appears to be no reason to make this decision to spend $60,000 for a lobbyist at this time. The deadline to report lobbying activity is not till December. Why the urgency to make this decision now? Why did you call the special meeting of justice for this one agenda item? Most importantly, and we expect an answer to this question, what is the lobbyist going to be lobbying for? Please defer this decision till December and focus your time and money on our urgent mission. Article 2.8, 4, and 5 of our management plan states that you will manage the production of groundwater without jeopardizing the availability of the water during extended periods of low rain, and without indubitably increasing frequency of springs and streams to go and dry. We respectfully request that you please focus on that and do not take action on this item tonight. This is from taxpayers in King County.
That was the only person ahead to speak tonight, so we're gonna move on to the next item. Discussion of possible actions. Approval of the minutes for the June regular meeting. You can hold.
Awesome.
We have a motion and a second. Have any other discussion on the item? All those in favor, signify by a high. High is held. Motion passes. Item Number 6, Discussion of Possible Action of Financial Statements of June 2024. Does the record show that Greg Ward just walked in, so he's present?
And nobody believes you were flooded.
Oh, it's a heck of a storm.
Really?
At least two inches.
The U.R. is ahead of the sun.
It's going south.
Total income, $6,964 for the month. For the year, $614,356. Total expenses for the month, $82,183.40. For the year, $407,863.53.
Right, right, good sound.
Motion to approve. I have a motion. I have a motion and I have a second. Any further discussion on the item? All those in favor, signify by a high. Motion passes. Next item is review of what the investment officers report. Anything new, Blake? You have a similar thing? All right, this is just a review item, so we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. This is Discussion of Possible Action: Invoices Received and Invoices Paid. Motion to approve. We have a motion on the floor, do we have a second? We have a second. Any further discussion on the item? All those in favor? Motion passes. Right now, we go to item number nine, which is Review the Texas Water Development Board Drought Index and Other Monitoring Sites.
Do you need to give my report?
Yes, please.
Okay. The mud wells were July, or 46, feet one inch. You go into stage three at 50. The city wells today were 59 at the tennis courts, and 48 feet one inch at City Hall.
How far are they away from stage three?
You want me to look it up? Stage, they would be going into, I think they're in stage one now, and they would be going into stage two. I have to look up what their levels are when they go to the next one. We got mud wells in to stage three at 50.
Yeah, how close are we?
About 49, but it was a little rain, so we...
It has to go from a week to...
Ten days.
Ten days. Thanks, BJ.
You're welcome.
What the public is seeing on the screen up here is the same thing we all have in your project this time. Added that, and then this will go on our website.
I didn't pay attention to it. I'm gonna walk you through the whole.
See, I had to bring it to your attention.
Good job, Tino.
How's that done? Is that Bluetooth, or?
Yeah, that's Bluetooth.
Now we just have a bigger TV? Oh, that is a little... I would say I don't really see the back bigger than the people.
Yeah.
Does it go through all the slides, or not?
No. No.
When you get to the end of that, you'll put it back to the monitor side.
Let me know when y'all get finished with it, so...
Marty, are you pretty familiar with the location of these wells?
Um, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so Erland House Pastor Well?
That is, um, lies off of...
334?
334. It's on the gate. It's right off the highway, right off the highway.
That's where you line up pretty? I wonder how long Jim set him on, or not, though?
I could answer right here. A few minutes after. Let me show you something real quick.
Four, five. Four, five. I'll spell the numbers down.
Yeah, that's right.
Just for information, the slides you've been seeing up there, it obviously transmits the water level graphs for both automated and non-automated monitoring locations as part of our overall water monitoring network. And since its inception in 2013, the district has continued robust development of the water monitoring network, and now has over 50 automated locations throughout the county. Measuring water level data between 15 to 60 million intervals and reporting over multiple online cloud platform platforms. There are additional existing 44 locations that require manual site visits to acquire the data currently planned or scheduled for future automation. Data collected in June 2024 was compiled with existing data sets, and almost 3 million groundwater districts' water level data points were recently submitted for protection for pollution in the final phase. The district has recognized the recent interest from members of the public over the last few years, and has been working diligently to get all data in a platform where data can be readily accessed. As part of this goal, ECOCA is nearly complete with a first phase and an online web-based S3 map, your application, where you want to select a location and see site specific. Marty, if you could.
Yeah, I'm trying to get it on there.
That was the one, right, that was the map? Okay, once, excuse me, once we get this up on our website, anyone can go into the website, you'll be able to click on one of the little red dots, and it will bring up the information on that particular well. In other words, the well number, depth of the well, depth to water, any information, blast longs, anything pertaining to the well. The blue dots on there are the ones where we have rain gauges. So this is something that will be coming before too long, and I think will be beneficial to the, not only board members, but certainly to the public, others too, to be able to go in on our website and click on that and take a look at the wells. Do you have anything else ahead, Marty?
Uh, yeah, once we launch this, you'll be able, like all the graphs that we put on, you'll be able to download them and print them out yourself. It'll have all the information, the longitude, latitude of every well, well ID, all that information on there. It'll, you'll have access to it. There will be a link on the website where you'll have access to this. No one has access to it right now, because we're in the process of developing it. All the data that we downloaded this past month in June, that's what we're putting into this right now, so we don't have a date yet for it to be ready, to be accessed by the public or anything like that. But it is, all the information that we've been collecting, since the engineers have been coming in and everything, this is what it's for, it's for this, so it'd help, you know, if you have a question about a well or anything, it's gonna be right here. We'll have all that on there. Still can't get that information, that's what we're here for.
It's a combination of domestic and permanent wells, right?
Correct. It'll be all on there right now. It just has our monitoring wells on there, because we're gonna put in all the other information. We just wanna have all that correct information and all, before we put it out there and not have any hiccups or anything. We want, so, but this is what we've been working on for the last couple of months and all of this information, so, so just wanted to give you all an update on that. Thank you.
Good morning.
Yes, sir.
Does it give a date of when the instrument was implemented?
Yes, it'll give us a date when the instrument was deployed. And the owner, and it's Equal Eye who has it, it has all that information. We'll have all that information on there.
Do we have any other questions, BJ? Do we have any other questions? All right, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is item number 10, which is Discussion of Possible Action on the Agreement for Legislative Representation. We've had lobbyists come on. Have we hired...
I said before, I can...
Remember, it's a long time ago since then. That was during the time when we thought certain different things were gonna come up in legislature, that endeavor metal to the district, that's one of the reasons why you get lobbyists, is if anything coming up, that's either you're here to, or let's say, put it this way, this board is here to protect the rights of all problems, all of water rights within the county. That's why you hire lobbyists, is to protect those rights. So let's say somebody's trying to put a pipeline there, or somebody's trying to pump water out, they're working for you to try to make sure that that doesn't happen, or they're basically working for the district, and the people inside the district to protect their rights. It's a thing the other lobbyists is for. This is in your package, this is the actual contract. So Tony, you live in there. They don't make the first year.
Yeah, but, yeah, a lot of, you know, bills are formulated, prefiled, whatever, between them and them. There's actually a lot of activity.
A lot of water issues.
Any issue.
Yeah.
I mean, it may not be any water issues. I mean, it may be a bunch, but, you know, there's some stuff going on behind the scenes now.
Prior to the time that they can actually find.
And that will build through the fall. I guess if it was me that asked last month to put this off a month, in the meantime, I've talked to a number of individuals, two of them are lobbyists, both of whom I've known for in excess of 15 years, I guess. I also spoke to Vic over, uh...
U Valley?
U Valley. I guess several things learned, you know, initially, I guess I'm showing my age, you know, the amount of money I thought was a bunch. Well, these two lobbyists that I talked to, you know, friends and neighbors and whatnot, supposedly, I mean, apparently what is proposed by Greg is quite reasonable. I mean, you know, friends and family discount, I asked them, what would you charge, and it was, oh my God. So, you know, what Greg has proposed, it's a bunch of money, but it's reasonable. You know, Vic's attitude, they had a lobbyist that currently do not. He was of the opinion that probably, yeah, he was like 51, 49, but the 51 was, that, you know, probably no would be his vote. But he did say that, you know, there's so many people with the drought, the ongoing drought, you know, clamoring for water from any source, that, you know...
Probably a good...
This may be a good session to have somebody looking out for us, you know, trying to, you know, transport our water somewhere else, you know, east or west. Somebody, I can't remember whether it was ever one of the lobbyists even mentioned Del Rio, which surprised me. I never dreamt that it'd be trying to run in that direction. Anyway, you know, my, you know, my, you know, the bottom line on it is, it really is kind of, in my opinion, a toss-up. The idea of lobbyists is to hit something off before it builds any kind of momentum and committee or whatever. Some of these, you know, the local bills typically are unopposed to people in the past. That's what, you know, years ago, you know, six, seven, eight years ago, when, you know, Tully Shahean and I went to Austin, you know, there was some, you know, it was proposed as a local bill, you know, trying to take our water and use a loophole to sell it out of the county. And we went over there just as individuals and were able to talk to a number of senators and reps, and eventually nothing came of it. But that's the idea, have somebody on the ground keeping up with that. You know, there are also other organizations, you know, Texas Wildlife, cattle raisers, Texas Farm Bureau, County Judge, you know, Jean Paul, you know, received notices on this. Again, it's kind of like before, I guess where I come down on this, you know, personally, if it's proposed and seconded, I will vote against it, but I will not speak against it, if that makes sense. I mean, it truly is kind of a, there's no, from what I've studied or whatever, talked to people, there's no clear answer on it. But, you know, if there is a time to try, it would seem that this would be the time because of the drought and the demands of the bigger cities, you know, more votes, you know, whatever, that Kenny County can muster.
I was just like Charlie.
I apologize. That's not an answer, but that, I mean, it's kind of the summary of the fault.
I was just like Charlie. I was kind of on the fence about it when I saw the amount, but I did some investigation on Greg. I'll tell him that's what he was anyways, but very well-renowned. And so I was like, well, so I talked to him, I said, what if, can we take members of the board, members, employees, can they go with you and tag along and learn this stuff? Because I'm not a politician by any means. I don't know if he's actually gonna go up there, but he said he'd be more than happy to do that and keep a record of everything he's doing. Like I said, I was like you in the beginning. I was like, well, that's a lot of money, but it seemed like for the price, he's gonna do his job, and now's the time, I think. Because there's gonna be, I think that there's gonna be people reaching out from there.
Well, you not only just have the drought, you got all this building and going on Castroville home, you know, lots of holes being...
Like an insurance policy.
Yeah.
But it would be a one-year contract, is that right?
Yes. One session. Actually, one session.
Essentially, essentially, it's like 18 months or something.
August through September.
Well, so have y'all read the contract? All right. All right, so when you get down to number six on this contract. The second sentence, it says, we plan to terminate this engagement by writing notice. Basically means agree through where you can terminate the contract whenever we want. You ready for that? Does anybody else have anything to say about it? I think it's very important that we fulfill what our obligation is to the people who is whole county. Not represent one person or a special group or anything else, it's everybody. And to make sure that our interests are basically told to the senators, to the reps and everybody. If this, what Charlie's saying is it doesn't take nothing for anybody to come in, they make a bill and they just stick it into some bill that you don't even know nothing about. That happens all the time, so you have to be prepared for stuff like that. I think it's money well spent. Like it's an insurance policy. So that's my take on it. So I'll be for it.
I'll make a motion for you to hire.
Very good. I've got a motion on the floor to accept the proposal for the agreement. I've got a second. Have any further? Anybody have anything else to say? All right, all those in favor? Okay, so everybody's in favor and we have one imposed at the record show. Moving on to the next item on the agenda. It's a discussion. There's some actual data and the prior future conditions of the 2023 loss more spring flow and well. What was this about, Janelle?
Okay, this is the same thing that was in your packet for last month. Kind of a general discussion of what Dr. Bill had presented. Talking back, you know, conclusions on this whole report that the DFC is scheduled for an update in the next two years. And the findings of the DFC non-achievement in 2023 in this letter and completion of ongoing study schedule for completion at the end of 2024 will be useful in the DFC update and it will be useful to provide context to the real senior innovations. Two relevant elements to consider include potential nonsignificance on a single year of non-achievement and the historically high evaporation rates in the last few years as a result of any increased irrigation demands. Really just, you know. 2014 because it was questioned and come up about 2014. Okay, because I would say the studies are ongoing to better characterize the nature of the connection between pumping and spring flow variation. Including improving the understanding of which wells contribute to spring flow decline. Partic components of groundwater pumping irrigation consists of irrigated acreage precipitation and evaporation. Goes on to explain that then. Apparently the evaporation last, last number of years, every year it seems like the evaporation is a little bit higher than it had been previously. As noted, 2023 represents the fifth consecutive year of below average precipitation. Moreover, the recent increase in evaporation as a result of the increased irrigation demands. As noted above, the fact that the DFC comparisons in 2014 and 2018 were outside the high and low bounds, while the subsequent years, 2015 and 2019 respectively, were within the bounds, suggests that there may be no long-term implications associated with a single year of non-achievement. Second, the series, and I think he hit, Dr. Bill has explained this several times. I know at the September meeting in Slater Hall, he hit. Gone into DSA.
The irrigated acreages in 2000. And right now is below four thousand. But there is a lot more. There is a lot more.
Because of the evaporation. And from years, I don't know, some of the properties that are being formed now were not being. They were not being formed back several years ago. Even though back in the sixties, seventies, early seventies, they were. Talk about like the forty-one hundred. Yeah. Heavy usage of it for the, this property changed hands and it didn't. They're no better for farming it as you will for now.
When's our winter next? When are we talking to Dr. Hudson next? When's he gonna be here?
Okay, whenever we need him here, he could be here next month with the following.
Yeah, I would like to him for him to be here as soon as possible. Today we worked a little bit on the drought management plan. Charlie will talk a little bit about that in a minute, but try to get something together as soon as possible. So as soon as he can get here and have stuff together, then I'll have it here for the chart.
Yeah, if you would, let's make it during the regular meetings. That way, you know, it's already on the schedule. Perfectly in here. Anyway, in Dr. Bill's, his conclusions, the one objective is of the ongoing studies to better characterize the connection between pumping and spring flow. This work is expected to be completed by the end of this year, 2024. This work will be an integral part of the analysis, deliberation about the DFCs that will be changed in the next, next cycle as well as, you know, management options about pumping restriction, in other words, drought plan. The, what I would call the subcommittee has met again and come up with, I guess I'd call it an outline. You know, just kind of a rough outline of what would be incorporated into the drought management plan. Along, I know there's, yeah, people were impatient that, you know, we've got to do something, do something now. But even the plan that was proposed that, that did not pass had a finish, finish the crop provision. Which means that in essence, it wouldn't have, I mean, you know, to finish the crops now, it wouldn't take, take, go into effect right now. It's what Bill's coming up with, Dr. Bill, is in essence, you know, part of it is refining this zone one, two and three as to what has an effect. You know, by rule, we have, we have to consider the latest science. That will be incorporated into this drought plan. If y'all, maybe some of you weren't here last time, but in a show of hands with the board, ask, you know. You know, just, you know, who on the board believes we need and need to adopt and implement a drought management plan? And all seven of us raised our hand. This is ongoing, this is going to happen. And, you know, we will get it done.
I think it's gonna be very important, I think I'll speak for everybody here, this needs to be done sooner than later. So we're gonna try to achieve that goal. Both our attorney and the hydrologist are both saying, and just like everybody else here, we need to have a drought management plan. But we're gonna put it together with science and stuff behind it, we're not just gonna willy-willy do something. So I'd like to get that set up with him as soon as possible. Try to get it here. Let's move on to the next item on the agenda. Discussion, possible action. Offer November 5th, 2024, the election director positions, Mud. FCS, which is Fort Clark Springs at large, City at large, County at large, and Precinct Four.
What do you need, just a motion to have the election?
Yes, sir, just a motion to call the election.
Let's call an election, I like the motion.
All right, I got a motion, I have a second. All right, I got a second, I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on that? All those. What positions are open again? So BJ's is Mud. Mine is the City at large. And you have. The county at large. And you have Precinct Four.
Ridge.
Ridge, which is a bridge. So those are all the positions that are up.
First day for you. Already running the paper, we have posted on our door about the upcoming election. The first day for anyone to pick up an application will be July 19th. And that runs through August 19th. And if you're interested in running for the board.
July 19th, right?
July 19th.
August 19th. We have a motion and I have a second. Any further discussion on it? Signify by. All right. All those in favor, passes. 13. Discussion, possible action, adoption of resolution, election order and notice of election. Entertain a motion. Or motion?
Yes. Motion, is this, this was prepared by Greg, right?
Like it's the one we've been using, I'm not sure who prepared it.
Oh, that's the standard language.
Standard language, yes.
Motion to adopt.
I have a second. I have a second. Any further discussion? Signify by. Motion passes. Item number 14. Discussion, possible action into a contract with the county clerk for November director's election. Our motion.
Go ahead.
I have a motion on the floor. I have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Passes. Discussion, possible action, County Appraisal District submits offer by Gracie Mata to purchase trust property, BKTVL Block 82 Lot 6. So the BKTVL is in Bracketville, that's abbreviation. Do you have any information on that?
It's in your, in your packet here, let's see, the last time. Last time the taxes were paid. Last time the taxes were paid on, to that thirteen. And it's just like.
We all entertain a motion at this time?
I'll try to talk to Mike.
All right, I've got a motion on the floor, you have a second? All right, I got a second. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor? Motion passes, move to the next item, discussion, possible action, County Appraisal District submits offer by Juan Luis. Want to announce that right? Purchase trust property. This is on Fort Clark. Between 15, Lot 153 and 154.
And no taxes have been paid on that since 2013. And on this one, I would just have a small mobile home money. By approving this, it will get back on the rolls for taxes, but it will also help Fort Clark because their purchasing will have to start paying assessments on it down to the lot.
All right, I have a motion on the floor. Motion to accept, I have a second. All right, I got a second. Any further discussion? Signify by. All right, motion carries. Item number 17, the general manager's report.
Well, I said, well, in a sense, it's a nice board meeting, we've had a number of public information requests, but they're busy with. Taking them one by one as they come in in order. We're behind on some of them, but we're working as fast as we can. And between other things, we're working on to get those filled as quickly as possible. There's still several of them that we're working on, but it's, it's an ongoing thing. We try to get them out as quick as we can. Sometimes, sometimes things just prevent you from getting them out as quick as, quickly if you'd like to. The Region J meeting is scheduled for this week at Santa Cruz. Region J, GMA 10 meeting is scheduled for Santa Cruz this week. Was canceled until September 28th, 28th. Region J will be meeting on August 8th. And GMA 7 is not scheduled meeting day yet, meeting day yet. But it will be sometime either late September or October when they'll be meeting again. Aside from that, you know, I've had calls from different ones that wanting information about their, you know, wells. We happen to know the depth of it, particularly if someone has recently purchased a property and coming in on call and want to know information about the wells on the property, what we have in our files. Sometimes we have information against on when the. while we have in our files, sometimes we have information, depends on when the, when the well was first dug, and there was a time, I don't recall the year, but one time, many years back, when the well was drilled, it didn't necessarily have to be filed with the state. It really didn't have to file any information with the state. Some of them did, some of them didn't, but in more recent years, they have been required to file with the state. So, some information we gather from out of the old files, others that we have, have that information. I'll check with, if it may be on their site, six months. Tried to help the property in the gathering, as we can, that's all I have to report.
Any questions? How's Jim and them coming along with all their stuff?
Sir?
How's Jim and them coming along with all their stuff, are they doing okay?
Very good, yes. They could, they could very good progress on it, yeah. We're just working very closely with them on providing them information. Working very closely to get at all of the stuff that they want.
All right, we all already started the checking meters and all that stuff, so everything looks fine.
Yeah, looking good, it's a fun.
Nobody else has any other questions, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Is, recess for executive session.
So, at this time, we're going to do, what future items, we need to do that now? I thought there were a couple of things you wanted on the next one. Also, you'll bring up the discussion of the drought management plan.
Yeah, I want to, maybe some litigation matters that I want to talk about, and then when we come out, then we'll do that.
So, that's a moving, I know, just putting it on for the future, for the next one.
Well, that'll be one of the items I want to put on there, which is going to be, maybe a little bit controversial, so I want to talk to you in first.
No, just in general terms?
Yeah, that's, that's going to be the beginning that goes on here.
I like it on there.
So, at this time, we'll both take this session. And then when we come out, we'll take action on that, and then I want to put a, one item on there for the next agenda. Okay, we're going to come back into open session now nine, ten P M. Nothing was, or no action was taken while in closed session. Now that we're out, there's no action to be taken at this point in time. So, I'm going to move up, back up to, let's see here. So, there I am about future agenda items, so. I'm going to call a special meeting for July the twenty-third. It'll be a discussion, impossible action item, implementing new rules. That'll be at six P M. Any other discussion or anything else? I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
I've got a motion on the table.
Yeah.
I've got a second. All those in favor?
All right.
Motion carried, we're officially adjourned at nine twelve P M.